We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the workshop of the Council and Commissioners for this month. And we'll start with pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for adjusting our schedule to have this meeting tonight instead of last night. That was due to an advertising issue that we had to wait an extra day for the budget. I will say Kathy's not with us this evening. She had planned to be at our meeting, but when we changed it to the 16th, that interrupted her schedule of flight to Hawaii today. So she's not with us, but she intended to be. You've seen the minutes of our last meeting. Any questions on those or you have a motion to approve?
Hold up.
Been moved in second to approve the minutes of our last meeting. All in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor of the two minutes. Segment five is saying aye.
Aye.
The votes same side, motion carries.
We'll start with our agenda here. Dan Burke.
I'm back. So I'm here tonight to remove appropriations from Budget 1161, which is Health First Indiana. And the reason for doing that is so I can meet my cash balance come January for this fund, for the budget submitted. So the budget I submitted for 1161 in 2026 is a total of $935,367. And Health First Indiana, the state, is only going to give me $414,929.44. So I need to deappropriate $520,437.59.
And you provided us all a list of the various lines that that's going to come from. Anyone have questions of Dan on his request? It's just a way to get 26 budget in line for them. Do we have a motion to approve his request to deappropriate?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Adam.
Council members, thank you for including me on your budget, or your meeting today, rather. I come to you on behalf of Judge Cox in Superior Court III with really a pretty significant request. It was made aware last Tuesday that the Pauper Attorney Line item within Superior III's county general budget had gone into the red. And as it sits right now, that fund, or that line item, rather, is currently $27,382 in the red, most of which, most of that negative balance has actually, is actually the result of claims that have been turned in since October 1st. So we've had a pretty substantial amount of claims. When I found out about this last Tuesday, I started doing a little bit of digging because I wanted to provide you all with some information. Some of this I've shared with Max and Beth. Some of the things I think that have contributed to this happening are that, first, Superior Court III has seen a huge up, or huge increase in appeals in 2025, specifically in termination of parental rights cases. Those particular cases require appointment of appellate counsel. So I think that that is one contributing factor to what has happened here. The second thing that I discovered is that the flat hourly rate that appointed attorneys bill changed for cases filed in 2023 or after. Just as an example, that if a case were filed in 2022 and resolved now, that case would be billed at around $90 an hour. Whereas a case that were opened in 2023 and resolved now would actually be billed at $110 per hour, around $110 per hour. The third contributing factor that I see, that I saw, was that attorneys seem to be billing really in batches. Just as an example, this is probably the most extreme example, but on June the 4th of 2025, one attorney submitted claims exceeding $42,000. That wasn't for work all done on June 4th, but rather work done up to that point. And that, those claims very well could have occurred from work done in 2024 or earlier, honestly. There may be other things that I haven't considered, but those were really the three main things that I came up with. I believe that my request was for council to consider an appropriation adjustment of $100,000. My reason behind that is, one, the $27,382 that currently sits in the red, and really what I believe will be the need for the remainder of the year. One last thing I did do is I want to be able to tell you what has been expended from that fund in each of the last five years. So, starting in 2021, $142,000. In 2022, $181,000. 2023, $166,000. 2024, $228,000. And then lastly, year to date, 2025, $221,000 has been expended. That's an average of around $187,000 per year for the last five years. Happening, is there any questions? Just try to provide really a realistic outlook for this particular line item for the remainder of the year.
Do you anticipate this upward trend continuing like this?
I tried to go back, or to go and look at cases pending and just a couple of different things. I don't know if I could come up with an actor equation to know what 2026 will look like. We've been trending up each of the last two years. That's definitely a possibility. But I'd like to think that maybe this is a one-off that will then settle back down.
I hope so.
Isn't this the line they dropped for 2026?
Yes, I believe.
But in the out of court services, this is their.
Just the Superior III, okay.
Superior III, there was $193,000 budgeted this year, and I believe in their budget, they asked for $160.
I believe so, I could.
Does that sound right?
But court services is different. So you do not have money in any of the line items to transfer this from?
I tried to take a look at that, and there's really just, it's so marginal that I really don't know that there's a place to take it from.
So this would have to come out of our contingency line in our budget?
If the council would entertain that.
I was gonna say, the request is for an appropriation, but you're not considering an additional appropriation for this?
No, his request is to transfer. So we could do it.
Well, and then Aaron even says appropriation is.
I filled something out.
Yeah. If it was appropriated, we'd have to have it re-advertized, take a period of time. So the question I have, do we want to transfer this to that line item for them or have it paid out of, directly out of ours? Contingency fund?
Transfer it over to that line item.
It's probably easier, yeah, that we can use contingency.
So we have a motion to transfer $100,000 from the council's contingency line item to the Pauper Attorney line item in Superior Court III?
Second.
Been moved in second that we transfer $100,000 from the council's contingency line item to the Pauper Attorney in Superior III. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we always know, every year things come up, and we always tell the court side, we pay for things that come up.
I'm trying, I'm gonna definitely be more proactive with this moving forward. I've shared a few reminders in my calendar to kind of keep tabs on things. And if something looks like it's gonna be exhausted, then I'll try to get it, get in front of it.
I know you're not in charge of those people because they fill separately, but is there a conversation that can be had to maybe get them more regular?
It is definitely something that I've briefly approached Judge Cox about and can follow again with him as well. So, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Matthew.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Coming to you this evening with, we got hit all at once this month with grants, which is a nice problem. We haven't had any for a few months, and the state decided to release several all at once. So I have three separate grants that I'm asking for permission to apply for from both council and commissioners. The first is one you should be very familiar with. It's the 2025 Emergency Management Performance Grant, which is our salary reimbursement for emergency management. They've done this for the last, oh my, 15, 20 years probably. And so that is money that the county will receive in 2026 to reimburse for what was expended in 2025. Unfortunately, if you'll remember, a few years ago, they put a cap on that, just like they have everything else. So it's, it used to be 50% of our salaries, and it is no longer. However, the amount is the same as it was last year, $44,827.63. And so I would like to apply for that grant again, so we can try to take advantage of that money coming from the state, which is actually from FEMA. Do you want to handle these one at a time, I assume?
Probably be best.
I do too.
I move we approve his request to apply for the grant.
Second. Been moved in second that we get permission to apply for this grant. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed on the order, council.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, segment five is saying aye.
Aye.
The votes same side, motion carries.
Thank you. Grant number two is the 2026 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. We have gone for this one several times in the past, but the last, the most recent was probably two or three years ago. Again, comes from the Department of Homeland Security through FEMA, specifically for hazardous material preparation. And I would like to apply for a grant, $9,800 is what was quoted to us by a vendor to do a commodity study for Wayne County. We've never done a commodity study, in other words, what's traveling down the highways, what's going through on the rail system. And they will even look at our Tier Two facilities that report the emergency, or extremely hazardous substances that are stored in various factories and industries around the city and county. No match to this grant, no in-kind match, no financial obligation from the county at all. It strictly is for this $9,800 to apply for that. Don't know that I'll get it, but apply for it.
Matthew, this is, Mark, is a reimbursable grant. So if you are awarded the grant, do you have funds in your budget to pay for it?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve the request of this grant. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed on the order, council.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, segment five is saying aye.
Aye.
The votes same side, motion carries.
Thank you. The third and final grant is a new grant. Never seen it before, but it's because it hasn't been offered before. It is called the Sewing Enriched and Enhanced Data Sets Grant with the acronym CSEED. I don't make these up. This is through the Indiana Office of Technology and the Geographic Information Officer for the State of Indiana. Been working very closely with Mr. Atkins, the Director of RGIS, to make sure he understands onboard and has any questions when it comes to GIS, because I am not the expert. However, we utilize GIS data on a daily basis for the 911 center, of course. So what this grant is for is reviews our data sets and the information that we have for our center lines and address points, making sure that they are in the correct format for next generation 911. We currently, as we sit here today, someone calls 911 from their cell phone. It bounces off the closest cell phone tower, and that is how the 911 call is routed to the correct 911 center. The next generation 911 is that it will be routed using the actual GPS of the handset and not through the cell phone tower. In order for that to correctly route 911 calls, all of the address systems, center lines, geographic data has to be in the same format. Our format, or our data is fantastic and is very clean. It just doesn't quite match what that data set is, or what the standard is through NINA. So our GIS department could probably absolutely do it. It's just going to be extremely labor intensive. And if the state is offering some money to bring a vendor in to help us get that data cleaned up and straightened up, all that we're out is a little bit of time on my part to fill out the paperwork. I think it's a win for us. So this originally, Max, when we first talked about, the state had allowed us to go up to $30,000 for this grant. Reached out to a vendor that Gunti and I have worked with in the past, and they provided a proposal for $7,500, well below the $30,000 max. So on that paperwork you have in front of you, I did alter that and modify it for the $7,500 is what I'm requesting for that grant, again, to apply for this grant and hopefully receive. No match, no in-kind matches, no financial obligation, so.
Questions for, correct? Do we have a motion?
Hold up.
Second. Been moved in second that we allow Matthew to proceed with his grant application. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
Do we have a motion for commissioners?
Second.
Hearing the motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, segment five is saying aye.
Aye.
The votes same side, motion carries.
Matthew, you're always welcome to come with, no sharing his dad's money.
I try, I try.
Before Matthew leaves, I just want to make an announcement. He was appointed by the governor this week to the Indiana Statewide 911 Board. And so he's one of, I forget how many members are on that board now, that is chaired by the state treasurer that regulates the 911 networks in the state of Indiana and the funding that is sent to the counties to operate their 911 centers. It was a competitive process, and because of the work that he's done here in Wayne County, he's well-known around the state for his initiatives, he was appointed, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Debbie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's keep it short, as usual. I just have some financial movement, some money from one fund to another. I've got, this is the payouts that we paid out of our RPF fund for two, the last two retirees that I had in my office. I was just asking if the county general could reimburse our RPF fund for those payouts. They were $4,345.20 for one and $3,075.30 for the other one.
Questions to Debbie? Can I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the request of the recorder.
Where, where do you want to transfer from into the perpetuation fund?
From.
You found a from list to transfer.
There's two requests. So are we doing both? Is it the motion for both or just the first one?
No, I've got two other requests on top of this one. But I was.
Okay.
This is the.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The numbers didn't match up.
Yeah. I think one of them was left off. Bobby, Bobby and I talked, and she said she would make sure you guys had it.
So were those people paid out of the perpetuation fund?
For the last few years, yeah. But they worked 35 years and 25 years, most of that being council paid.
And this payout was for vacation and.
Sick days.
Would have been mostly.
They had to use it, they paid today.
Paid from, for the perpetuation fund.
So if they were paid from the perpetuation fund, why aren't we not paying this from perpetuation?
I did.
Yeah.
I was just asking you to reimburse it so that I can use that, those funds for what that fund is meant to be used for, and that's preservation of records, not salaries.
We had a motion, right?
Yes.
But that was, I thought we were doing the first one.
That's what I thought too.
I'm sorry, I had that as my first one. I don't know what you guys.
That's okay, yeah. So I'm gonna withdraw that motion right now because on this one, it looks like she wants us to give her the money for it.
I would assume we'd have to take it from our budget to reimburse that back to that line item.
Yeah. In that case, if everybody's agreeable, I'll make the motion to take it from contingency.
For the $7,000?
For the $7,420.50.
We'll second that.
Okay. It has been moved in second now, we got the right line here to transfer from the council's contingency fund to this perpetuation fund. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So the next one is two overages that we're gonna have in salaries. I've, I'm not gonna fill one of my part-time positions anymore. So line item 13490 had $21,262.22 left in it. So I'd like that to be transferred back to my recorder's perpetuation fund, the general fund. Right now, it's appropriated for salaries. So I just need to move it back to my perpetuation. I've got a big book project that will probably be $250,000, $300,000, and they need to replace that, use that money from those salaries that I'm not using anymore. So that one is one that I'm not filling anymore, the part-time. The other one is 14, no, 13480. That's my part-time clerk. The excess is from, in the 25 budget line item, because the job was vacant from October 24 to April of '25. So there was an excess in that line item of her salary. So if we could move that excess back into the perpetuation fund, I can use that for preservation records also. So we're asking, just asking for those two excesses to be moved back into the regular RPF fund.
Questions for Debbie?
If this is in the perpetuation fund, isn't that a non-reverting fund?
Isn't that what?
Isn't that a non-reverting fund? So if they're not expended, they're gonna remain in the perpetuation fund, correct?
From what I understand, those, the salaries have to be appropriated, so they're put into another line item?
Now, they're put into another line item. My question is, they're, they're remaining in the perpetuation fund as a dedicated fund, so we don't need to transfer. If she's not gonna fill them, the balance at the end of the year just reverts back into her overall perpetuation fund, correct?
Either that or she needs the money now, we need to deappropriate that money.
I don't have to have it yet, no.
It's just that this money's sitting in these two line items, and she wants it back in the $50,000.
But those two line items are in the perpetuation fund budget, right?
Correct, yeah.
So I would think that Mary's question is correct.
It didn't appear, you know, when we looked at the accounting part of it, it didn't appear that those revert back. It kind of stays in there.
So really, it doesn't matter. The money's gonna end up in the same place, whether we transfer or let it revert back. If it's felt that it needs to be transferred from a bookkeeping standpoint.
No, inside that budget, it'll be sitting in those line items, though, that are saved there for a part-time person. I guess that's what she's getting at.
So do we have a motion that?
That we just change them from those line items to the other line item, basically, is what she wants to do.
So we copy the money to auto-appropriate, $50,000 is auto-appropriate, so we copy the appropriation to auto-appropriate.
We won't be de-appropriating that, it'll just be transferred within the same fund to a different line item. So it's a, it's an exercise in fidelity, I guess? It's not gonna hurt for us to do it, but we don't have to do it.
That would be my thought, but if that's what they want to do, then.
I'll make the motion, the bottom line's gonna be the same.
Yeah.
I motion to approve the transfers.
Second.
Been moved in second to transfer the request of the two funds. She's made. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
So then the third request I had was line 10232. That's also a salary that's appropriated in the RPF fund. It's gonna be short by the end of the year because the former employee who retired was working 35 and a half hours, and the new employee's working 40 hours a week. So we're paying more out in salaries for that position. So I'm requesting that $2,123.66 be appropriated in line item 10232 out of my perpetuation fund.
So is this an appropriation or a transfer? Simone, does this need to be an appropriation?
Oh, line item thing, I think.
She said appropriate, so if it's appropriate, we have to advertise that and then go through the hearing.
Well, what I understand is you guys have appropriated money in these salary lines in my perpetuation fund, right? So that line is gonna be short.
She better have a separate line for each person that gets paid. And so she's just moving it again, just like, I don't ask her. It's just moving it into a line item for a employee.
That, that information is not on our.
No, we don't have that on here.
This is the one Bobby said.
It's in the emails.
Yeah.
So let's get the fund numbers in that we're dealing with.
Okay, so the, the fund number that I needed to come out of is 5,000, 50, so it'd be 1189, 5,000, 000, 004. That's the large perpetuation. Then it would go into 1189, 10232, 000, 000, 000.
Nothing can go from auto-appropriate this funds, so it's just switching.
Are we only gonna run short towards the end of the year? We're, we're fine now? You're fine now? I, I would recommend that, that we give her the opportunity to fill out the paperwork. You're fine now. I, I would recommend that, that we gave her the opportunity to fill out the paperwork. Some paperwork we can handle this in a future meeting.
It's filled out. I can make copies for you if you wanted. I mean, it was sent to Bobby. It just somehow it didn't get to you. Or, well, first it didn't get to you, then she sent it to you.
It was in our email, but.
You, you necessarily have to do that if it's gonna get run out. At the end of the budget year, we'll get zero others.
Well, my understanding is the fi- the line item will run out of money before the year's over because the person is working more hours than the bridge or line item ten.
And for payroll reasons, we had to make a line item for each person. That's why it needs to just go from one to that other line.
Yes, but fifty thousand is an unappropriated fund. We don't put money in that.
We don't have money.
Okay. We don't use that. We pay out of it and it comes under the cash, but we don't ever appropriate money.
No, we're not putting it in there. We're taking it out of there and putting it just in the other one.
Well, in the other one, we were putting it in there. That's what I was confused about.
Move that directly into this line item?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it. So when I fill these papers out and send them down to your office, you guys aren't seeing them?
Okay, so I, I've got the form here for it. I didn't realize that. It's just not on the budget, so it's, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I was gonna say, I, I would've assumed you guys had already seen it. Our office needs to tell us how it's supposed to be.
Yeah, we haven't seen it. I'm not sure what this is about. But you can be, it must be from one appropriated line to second appropriated line. It can be from unappropriated, so this number's can be.
And my point is, this is not an emergency. It doesn't need to be addressed tonight.
So let's get this straightened out, come back for the next meeting, and take care of it.
And I wanna thank Debbie for, she's so dedicated to her job. She's come out to many of the festivals this summer and handed out papers for. And if you wanna tell everybody, because it's on TV, what, what you have been doing this summer.
Well, we've been just going to festivals and trying to reach out to as many people as we could with flyers about Property Watch from Doc Pop dot com. And it's to help people monitor their real estate. And if anything gets sent to our office to be recorded, and it might be fraudulent, they have the opportunity to try to stop, catch it and stop it through that watch. They would be alerted within ten minutes of when it goes on record. So it's, it's something that I hope all of our citizens Wayne County do.
What's the website?
It is Doc Pop dot com. You can go there. There's a, a little, I don't know what you call it, icon that says Property Watch, or you can go to my recorder's page for Wayne County. And there's also that same icon that you can click on. It takes about two minutes to fill it out. It's very easy.
And it's free?
It's free, yeah. Yeah, not like the ones that are advertised on TV.
It literally does take two minutes. I did it the other day after you told me about it.
Yeah. It's, it's amazingly fast, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see you at a future meeting on that transfer.
Sorry, Doc.
Uh, you're all right. Thanks, Debbie.
Okay. Brandon.
Good evening. I've got a couple things before you this evening. The first one is the request to apply for a grant. I think I need to talk to Matthew. Maybe he can find me some zero match grants for my bridges. That would be very helpful. But anyhow, this is for the gravel pit rope bridge. It's a community crossings grant, which we paid fifty percent of the construction on this one. The superstructure is now in poor condition. It doesn't see a lot of truck traffic from the gravel and yards and milestone up in that area, so it's a connector between Uparis Pike and Richmond, so looking at applying for community crossings on this. Trying to get it in before all the legislative changes come in on the road mileage and the restrictions and all that stuff, so this would just be a request to apply for the community crossings on this project.
And the match money would be what, how much?
The total project is running around one point three, so we would be, our, our match would be six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Questions for Brandon on his grant request?
We have approval for a grant.
Say a fine for a grant. Been moved a second to approve the application of the grant. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
I did take this, so you guys have already approved the, um, their, their, thanks. Along with that, I do have a financial commitment letter for this community crossings application. Require everyone to signature with approval.
So we need a motion to approve signing this, the ten funding request or letter.
Find this commitment letter for our local match.
I'm here, seconded.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for that. The next item before you is a request to transfer from multiple line items to fund our bridge seven twenty. Just to give you an update, the NDOT letting last week, our, our two projects that we bid came in really favorable with NDOT. Collectively, we're about eight hundred thousand below engineer's estimate. This particular project was five hundred thousand dollars less than the engineer's estimate was, so that reduces our local match. I know this was the project that we were one point two, one point three short, so it does reduce that down to eight hundred thousand dollars from the local side. So these transfers, along with what I already have appropriated in this line item for this project, will fulfill the NDOT local match for this year, along with these transfers.
That's good news.
Yes.
Everybody's just sitting here. I'm like, that's good.
So NDOT didn't come forth with any additional money for this, though?
Uh, they're still working through vetting the contractors, so once I get the, the final invoice from NDOT, that'll let me know if they didn't provide any additional funding. This transfer would, would be the worst-case scenario if there's no additional funding, but I can definitely let you guys know when we get that final invoice.
Okay. So there's a request for the transfer of a total of five hundred thousand dollars to cover Bridge seven twenty, has been bid. Money needs to be forwarded to NDOT soon. Any questions or discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved a second to approve the transfer from multiple line items to Bridge seven twenty for five hundred thousand dollars. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thanks for the good news.
Brandon?
Yes.
You did it.
Okay.
Debbie's not here.
Yeah, she's not here.
Mark, you got a request to transfer?
Yeah, I've got a bill for law books that in my appropriation is short, four hundred twenty-four dollars to pay. I need to pay it. Just need to transfer from my travel, your training.
Training and education.
That appropriation.
Any questions to Mark?
There was approval.
Second.
Been moved a second to approve the transfer from the training and education line to reference books. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Thank you. Mike?
Good evening. I've got three financial commitment letters. One's gonna coincide with the bridge replacement on gravel pit to apply for the community crossings on that, to have that paved, and we're gonna try to combine those both together, so when they do the bridge and get it redone, then we'll pay the whole roadway. It's like point two four miles, so it's not very long. It's over three hundred tons, I think, but to match all, everything up and everything, we're just gonna let a contractor do that part of it. So the estimated total material cost on that would be seventy-nine thousand, one oh six, seventy-six. And I think Bobby had those. Did she get you those copies? I didn't have your letterhead, so.
So that's the letter we need to sign?
Yes.
I'll make the motion before I sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve the signing of this request.
Simone?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You can sign that now.
Thank you.
And then I have two other financial commitment letters. They're both gonna be for ceiling projects, kind of the way NDOT does it. I can't use our own, our own yearly bid for materials, so I have to bid this out separately. Well, when we do gravel for our ceiling projects, we use one on the east side, one on the west side. Well, I can't use two vendors. So I have to bid two different projects and keep them separate, so we do one on the east side, one on the west side to meet NDOT's goals. I kind of, kind of loophole around that part of it. So one of them would be for, on the east side, would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand, forty dollars and thirty-four cents, and then on the west side would be a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one dollar and seventy-one cents. So the total project for both of them combined together, it'd be twenty-two point four one miles to seal. The total project cost would be three hundred forty-nine thousand, five thirty-seven, sixty-seven, which is the three hundred and fifty max is what I can go to if we do this in-house on ourselves, so we can't, we could do more, but we can't apply for more because we gotta stay under that. The totals don't add up to the three fifty, but I have to take in our equipment and our manpower and add that in to meet the state requirements.
So the local commitment for one is ninety-three thousand, five hundred, right? And the second commitment, seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
And cents.
So do we have a motion to approve the.
So who?
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
This is for both, correct?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You may sign now.
Yeah.
Thank you for your advice, Doc.
I appreciate it.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry?
All right, I have three interlocal agreements for the radio project. Commissioners and council both will need to approve. This is the transfer of the radio equipment from Wayne County to political subdivision as part of that radio project. So I have one for Hagerstown in the amount of equipment, seventy thousand, eight eighty-four, eighteen. I have one for Green Township in the amount of seventy thousand, six fifty-six, sixteen. And I have one for Clay Township. I didn't print the exhibit on. I'll have the copies to you, but it's a significant amount as well for mobiles, portals, and pagers. That equipment has not been received by the county yet, but is being programmed by the vendor. We expect it to be delivered in, in the fourth quarter, so.
So you have the amount of value that.
For this one, I can tell you, I don't have it at this attachment. So.
So do we approve all three of those in one motion? And we're going to have many more of these before the project's completed?
Twelve, so we got nine more coming in.
Okay.
So this is an harbor-funded project. Council sort of came here to ask.
Those are for approval of all three?
Second. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor of these three interlocal agreements, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we need all signed?
And commissioners, any to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve these three interlocal agreements. Is there any further discussion? Hearing all in favor of the motion, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Those save, sign. Motion carries. Can we pass these around or just lay them out after the meeting and come by and sign it?
Yeah, we're passing them around.
Commissioners first.
I carry sign all over there.
That's, that is one.
Oh.
Two copies.
Gotcha.
You wanna put the commissioner's signature page on top?
That's okay.
I can change and do this in the council's. Vice President would've gotten that part right. Go ahead and sign yours, and I'll pass it back now. Oh, nasty.
Why is somebody else on that side? It's just me. It's the A side.
I thought you might anyway.
Oh, it was, because I'm coming into the budget.
I know, so happy that we're writing it out, okay.
Both know that all.
The Clay Township one was eighty-five thousand, eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. Okay. Here's these two. I hope everybody gets all of these signed.
I'll check.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Gary's on the, no, on that one.
Did Gary get it too? Yay!
Sorry. Sorry, I think you're under the bus there, Gary. See, the budget adoption meeting is always long, so. I've got a twenty-minute presentation myself.
I'm not in any hurry. I, I'm not in any hurry. I just.
Oh, I could go get some more.
Aww.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's a seven.
I don't got one quarter of it today. Okay, make sure Gary's on this.
Doing a hip.
Okay. I've got a couple on here.
Gary, are you just gonna go ahead? Are you just gonna go ahead and do this?
When we're done, we'll. Mark, I'll bring the entire stack to you when they're all signed. I'll bring the entire stack to you when they're all signed. Great, we're the excess.
Thank you.
Before you start your placement, you have a, an appropriation reduction. There is an advertising for the DICE meeting for a resolution for that deduction that I have to present to the state.
Okay.
So.
So that required a hearing?
Yes, I mean, it was advertised for the night. So before you start your budget process to get the health department where it ought to be. I'm asking you to sign this, this resolution.
So after the fact, we need to officially have the hearing, is what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
You, you've already done it through his request, now you're gonna do it through mine as an advertised request.
So we should have had this hearing prior to that? So we'll open that up right now. Any comments on the request to appropriate the money?
It's resolution two oh two five oh two.
Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So move, second.
It moved to second to close the hearing, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've already approved the request, so.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed? That completed?
I think send this around, but here we are.
One more.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the twenty twenty-six budget. Actually, it's budgets. We have had multiple meetings to discuss the budget. We've made multiple changes. At our last meeting, we approved the salary raises. I want to commend the HR department and the auditor's office. And Jeff helped as well. A lot of work to get the salaries calculated and inputted into the, uh, budget to reflect, uh, our action of the last meeting. I think at the last meeting, we pretty well had agreed on all the other items in the budget. So at this point, it's open for discussion on the budget or a motion to approve the budgets that we've acted on for twenty twenty-six.
I have one question.
Yes.
That's concerning the employee that, are we going to hire the employee for the commissioners or not?
That's been, you mean the, that department head?
Yeah.
That's been taken out.
Just wanted to make sure.
They agreed to take that out, but to keep the position that Laura is currently in down there.
Replace Laura.
Yes. So, uh, that's been taken out. Any other questions?
I don't have one.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I, so this being my first experience, I've heard your vice patients. I also, um, feel like that there was a lot of hard work done to get us to this point. I am a little bit tad confused though, because I thought our target was to get to where what we adopted last year? Because we still, we still haven't received any numbers from the state, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're not even, I mean, we're eleven percent above that from what we adopted last year. And the, and the biggest is in the council's budget. And I, I felt that after our last meeting, it was like, okay, let's see where all the raises end, where we land. Then we'll know our true number. So in our council budget, where we have the contingency, so it's.
Our one time.
One time.
One time.
So it's at six million dollars, but we've, but we spent last year two point seven. So I'm trying to figure out why we have such a big number in that.
Because we want to make sure that, uh, the budget is, the request is sufficient uh, to meet whatever the state says we're allowed to get at. Uh, in December, we will get a form back from the state that if, they either approve that budget or they tell us how much we need to reduce, uh, our budget to come under the, uh, cap on the levy. So it is a fully, it, it will be a balanced budget once the state approves it. We have that line, large number there to make sure that we get all the funds that, uh, are due us. Last year, we did not get that. We left money on the table because we didn't have enough requests in our budget. So that's the reason that number's still there. We know that the state or, I mean, most of us think the state's gonna say we gotta cut X dollars and we'll take it out of that line item.
Okay, so if they don't, I just feel like we, we have, this body has been extremely committed and the departments have worked with us to get to a point of having a responsible budget. This doesn't look responsible to me with eleven percent increase. And so I'm trying to meet.
We know, or we've.
We all say that, but I've.
Well, if, if the budget's approved, that doesn't mean we'll spend it, because the one line, the one-time line items.
Inflation.
Most of, or a lot of it doesn't get spent. And in fact, this is the first year I remember that we don't have a long list of things that we want to do or to fund out of that.
We have nothing right now in our twenty twenty-six.
Most years, we've got a list of things, uh, through the budget process that would be coming out of that line, so.
How much did we cut last year out of one time after the state?
About one point five.
Yeah, right.
How much did we cut in twenty-four, do you remember?
I don't remember, we have to.
Well, I think in twenty-four, we had, we knew what the money was gonna be when we got it, and we, we budgeted to that. In twenty-five, or the year that we didn't get all the money was because the calculation of miscellaneous revenue did not, uh, match what actually the state said it was gonna be, and that's the reason we didn't get that. So, Misty, I understand what you're saying. This is just a placeholder to make sure that.
But I'm signing my name to something that's not a place, it's not a placeholder. It really isn't a placeholder. And we're voting on a budget and we're telling, what do you say, no, Beth?
I'd say no, I'd say yeah.
Oh, I thought you said no. So, I mean, we're voting on a budget and it's gonna have, after we've told departments, this is a difficult time, and we're increasing the budget eleven point seven percent.
Part of that increase is salary increases.
No, the biggest increase is out of, no.
No, the biggest is that line item, but I said part of it is that.
Yeah, and so I, I just feel like we've worked so hard to get to a point and we're eating our own words. Does that make sense?
If you would, if you would give us the number that we know that we're gonna have from the state, we could get to that point and be there.
Right.
None of us know that number, unfortunately. The state doesn't know that number. I don't know how they're gonna come up with what they tell us in December, but they'll have to. And the thing about that line item being in our budget, whatever that amount ends up being, can't be spent till we approve that we spend that. It's not out there for somebody to just come and spend.
Are you waiting for the state to accept or deny that budget based upon income to relate to that six million dollars?
That will be where, if the state says we have to cut money, that's, that'll be where that is, is there. And the reason we've done that is that year that we didn't reach the maximum and we left that on the table.
Well, I checked with the state, uh, DGIF last week. We are going to be at the maximum levy and rate that we can get. But that six million dollars in the county's budget that we're gonna present, that I'm gonna present to the state will not require that you cut that amount.
Well, we disagree on that, Mark, and I understand.
I understand, but when I give that to them, it will fund it. So if the discussion is, will we reduce it under any circumstances? That, that's, that's up to you guys. What I'm saying is, as it stands now, that what I give the state will fund that county general fund budget.
I understand what you're saying, Mark. I don't agree with that, but I understand what you're saying.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, they could come back and say it's a fully funded budget because of our cash balances, right? I mean, they're not gonna tell us we have to cut, because we could say we're gonna fund it based on what we have.
Two years ago, they told us we had to cut. And the situation at that time was not as bad as it is now. We had to cut because we had more in there than we had budgeted for, and it was that line item that did it. I, that's why I don't agree with what Mark says, because.
Yeah, he's saying the funded budget side.
Because two years ago, financially, our general fund and all that was better shaped than it is today, and we still had to cut a million and a half. So that's why I think we'll end up having to cut.
And the reason is because the LGF assumes that any dollar that's appropriated will be spent. And, you know, we don't, we don't close out the books until the end of the year, and they're gonna approve the budget sometime in December.
Which form has that stuff?
Early December, technically, recently.
And the unspent funds in the twenty-five budget will probably be in that five million dollar range.
But I think, I guess what I'm trying to say is, none of us, nobody knows, that's been one foot every. And the position of uncertainty right now. I get what Misty is saying. I also agree that at the end of the year, we will have a cash balance left over. We're in far better shape than some of the counties surrounding us.
Great.
I also echo from the auditor's office and Kim, Fred, and all the officers who work very hard for us trying to help us get to the right at this point. But I think the key is that if we have that money in there, we don't have to spend it.
Exactly.
And, you know, without that uncertainty right now, we don't know what's gonna happen.
We need that in our cash balance from year to year.
And that, another factor that will impact us greater next year is the state has estimated that our, uh, circuit breaker amount will be quite a bit higher. So that's money that we will not raise, even though it's budgeted.
So let me just ask this scenario then. Um, state goes back and says, you've got the cash, you're approved, you have your fully funded budget. We know it's not balanced. Are we gonna be responsible to go back in and balance it, or are we just gonna leave it alone and just do?
As long as we don't approve to spend any money, the money out of that line, it's set there. I don't think that's what she was saying.
Yeah, that's not what I'm asking, but that's okay. I don't wanna hold a vote up, y'all.
Misty, when you say it's not balanced, what do you mean?
So Mark, what you're saying is, it is a funded budget.
Yes.
Absolutely, I totally agree. We don't know what the state's saying we can spend, so we're, we're approving a budget based on what we don't know what we can spend, right? Do you agree with that?
If it, if you leave that six million dollars in there, you're gonna raise six million dollars in tax dollars.
I know. So, so, but my point is, if you leave it, so what I'm just, this is just me, I mean, right? Because I thought we were trying to shoot for, I thought our agreement was shooting for where we were last year on what we approved.
It's between you guys, I'm, I'm just telling you.
Right, so that's, yes.
We said we would like to get there, but if, that's what we're saying, we just have the one number figure so that when they tell us to cut, we will be very close to what we were last year. If they tell us to cut. And if they don't, we're not gonna spend it, so we're still there. We're just not, we're not going to spend that money.
But you're gonna raise it?
Not necessarily, no. If that cap, if, if, if enough people's at that cap, we're not gonna raise that kind of money. I don't, I don't feel like we, you know, if the cap hits there, I don't think we'll be able to raise that kind of money.
Who was asking on the cap?
Thank you, thank y'all.
I understand what you're saying, Misty, but yes, I am satisfied with what we've done. And we've always carried that one-time money as a placeholder.
Absolutely, the history shows that, but not at the level we're looking at it now.
However.
This is a very high level, so I agree, you're right, but this is a much higher level than what we've talked before.
And we placed it at that high level to, to ensure ourselves that we capture the revenue that's due to Wayne County and to give us a single line item to cut from. Because if we don't do that and the state comes back and tells us to cut X number of dollars, then we have to go back into every department's budget to find where we're going to cut those dollars from. This gives us the opportunity to cut it in one place.
The cap will reduce, is part of the budget that I'm gonna give the state to accept. And their estimate was seven and a half million dollars is what that cap will be for next year.
Circuit breaker cap.
Yes, that is part of this budget. That is something that has already been figured in as a loss of income. The tax rate that, uh, we put on for next year is as high as it's been for three or four years. Dollar four is what we're looking at. So that's, um, well, it's the dollar oh oh seven. Those figures that were discussed are in this budget that I'm gonna give to the state, such as the highway department, which is, um, a question that Jeff and I had this afternoon. The wheel tax estimate for next year in the highway department is in there. The, the money that's not gonna be raised to support the budget that I'm gonna present to the state has that money in the budget as income. So that when you, when you go through these, all of the things that are open to discussion, all of the things such as the, um, what the cap's gonna be and all that, there are estimates in that budget for those things. The state's provided some of that information to me, and then we put it, we consider it in the budget. So if the question is, we don't know what the cap's gonna be, that's right. We won't know till spring whether this thing's gonna work out the way it's supposed to work out. And that seven million dollar cap is in that budget, reducing the money that you're gonna collect.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank y'all. And I appreciate the work and I'm, Beth, I appreciate all that you did and Max and the staff has done to get us to this point.
Well, it makes a motion that we adopt the functions that we have created. The auditor's heard that into the state. And that includes the general fund budget, the highway, the health, all of them. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Plus highway and bridge and stuff. Okay. It moved in second that we approved all of the budgets that we had worked on and have before this decision. Any further discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Again, we so much appreciate all the work, and particularly the work of the last week to get this finished out.
Now I'm gonna ask you to sign the resolution for which you just passed, so I can report to the state what you've done. So if you will sign that, this is what the tax rates are gonna be for, based on what you've done here tonight.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We're down to Mr. Hickamoff.
Okay, looking at your project sheet, has some changes since the last time we talked about this. On the fairgrounds parking project, we do have the, uh, the highway department, Brandon and Mike Sharp has put together some, um, estimates, they're getting together some estimates to put together a plan to put in this parking lot that we planned for over the last couple of years. They looked at what trees may need to be removed, what utilities may be, need to be removed, and looked at the drainage, and so they'll be gathering some estimates for that, and we'll bring those back to you, uh, when we have those available to us. The, uh, maintenance building, security fence, that's still under advisement. The upgrades that we talked about in the chambers here, the, remember, we're gonna start with a new processor for the speaker system and install some additional larger speakers. a new processor for the speaker system and install some additional larger speakers. And those will, uh, they're planned to be installed on October 30th and 31st. The west parking lot lights and outlets, that project's been completed, and what that's done for us now, it's taken all the wires that was underground, that was coming from the jail, that we've had some problems with over the years of, of breaking. Those are now overhead, they're served by a meter of its own, uh, that serves just those lights in that parking lot. The lights themselves have been changed to LED, so they have less energy consumption. And we've added, uh, some plug-ins, so the coroner can plug in his, uh, two vehicles that have the hydraulic cots in them to keep those heated at all times. And so that gets him away from the courthouse across the street in some designated spots. The courthouse front entrance, uh, as you can see out here, work continues. The, uh, the sidewalk on the north end of the annex has been completed. They are now moving to the transformers that are on the north side of the courthouse, and they're pouring some additional pads that will go around that so that we can put a security fence around that. Uh, they started installing the new light fixtures today. There's a couple of them that's been installed in the annex parking lot. If you want to take a look at those when you go out, they look very nice. The prox card lock system, the, that has been completely installed as of yesterday. And so we'll be working through getting everybody's photograph on the cards, as well as getting the program, programming into the cards. We've had some changes we need to make, but, uh, over the next, course of the next couple of weeks, that should smooth out. So when you folks come in, when council comes in for your meeting on November 6th, after you've met, if you can bring your cards in that do need photographs on them, we can get those printed back to you, uh, and get those programmed for you. Because I think some of you wanted some west side, uh, access, correct?
Really need all the doors for this building because, you know, you don't know which direction you're coming from, particularly when you go out to go across the street.
So we'll get those programmed, and we'll plan on doing that on the 6th, so bring your cards in.
Would you please, in the next meeting's agenda, a reminder for us to bring our cards? My card is at home on my desk right now because I didn't think about it.
And then the, uh, the last project, I kept telling you, we've got some information coming, and so, um, I'm going to spend some of your one-time money tonight if I could, so, um, the courthouse security entrance, we, the commissioners have been looking at this. And this comes about because of several things. You know, over the last course of a couple of years, uh, a lot of our projects that we've taken on either addressed American Disabilities Act, uh, circumstances in our abilities that where we need to upgrade our bathrooms and doors, et cetera, as well as addressing security issues. The security cameras, the probation department, uh, security wall that was installed, the updates in the security equipment that's, uh, in front of the courthouse when you go into the front entrance, and then most recently, the prox card, uh, program. So this, uh, is to address, uh, a couple of things on the west side of the courthouse. The Indiana Supreme Court has administrative rules that are applicable to all Indiana courthouses. And that in that, in those rules, they designate that you should have a separate entrance for prisoners, which is why we bring the prisoners in on the west side of the courthouse. So that poses several issues. We've had a couple of security studies done over the last, uh, six years. One was from DLZ. They've indicated that that is one of our weak points in our security on the west side where the prisoners come in. And most recently, there was a, an assessment done by, uh, our sheriff's department, and they indicated that, uh, the driveway design on that side of the courthouse for prisoner transport vehicles poses a safety risk due to its narrow structure and the lack of maneuverability for vehicles trying to get into that driveway. And then it complicates tactical operations should they be needed. So I've got you some, some photographs of what we're looking at, and they're in front of your, your seat tonight. So take a look at that first photograph, and that just shows you, on this particular day when this was taken, there's two jail transport vans there, as well as a coroner's vehicle. Now, that coroner's vehicle will be moved, but on any given day, we'll have one or two transports there. And you can see, the, the one on the left, either they would have to turn around in the grass or they would have to back out on the third street. And for the black van to get into where it is, it had to come in, maneuver to the left, and then back up to its current position. And then if you look at that first photograph, also look at the arch, uh, back in there is where we have our cooling tower for the cooling system for the courthouse. And that's where they bring, there's a door to the left there to where the prisoners are taken in. The second photograph then shows you looking into that arch area. And, and part of this proposal will lead to protect the, uh, the equipment that's there. And you can see there's an access panel that controls that cooling tower that, uh, is, provides the cooling to the courthouse. Then to the, the next photograph on number three, that's the door that the prisoners are taken into. And one of the concerns that was raised was that black arrow that I have for you there, there's a place that someone could hide back in there and, uh, lie in wait for our deputies as they take prisoners into that door. There's nothing to keep them from going behind there. Then picture number four shows you the width when there's two vehicles sitting on there. And you can see that, uh, there's been, just from the bare grass, a lot of times when there's two vehicles there, they drive into the grass because of the narrow width of that driveway. And then you can see the cracks in the existing concrete. Then pictures five and six, uh, and seven, uh, further show you the condition of the concrete that exists there. And then the eighth picture then shows you where a proposed exit would be, uh, if in fact, uh, we would accept the alternates as this is put out for bid. So looking at the drawing then, this drawing that's, uh, on the eleven and a half by seventeen sheet, the picture on the right is what is existing now. And then the picture on the left is what is proposed. And you can see that the proposal is to, to widen the driveway. And that's about as much as we can widen it because the, the, uh, topography drops off pretty good to the, to the road, to the third street there, and that's, that's about a width of about three and a half feet extra there. The part that shows, uh, kind of the grainy part that goes to the, what would be to the south of this drawing, shows the, how it would come a loop driveway, and so the, the van drivers would not have to back out on the third street. They could just simply drive completely through the, the drive, driveway. So what I'm asking for tonight, the commissioners have, uh, approved a contract, uh, to put this out for bids, design, to design this and put this out for bids, subject to, uh, funding of that contract. The, uh, the contract for design, surveying, preparing bid documents, and putting it out for bid is twenty-three thousand dollars. I'm asking for that to be paid from, from the council's one-time account.
Do you have any kind of an estimate yet, of what kind of cost we're looking at?
The estimates are about a quarter million dollars. And we think this project does a couple of things. Number one, it addresses the, the security issues that were raised. Plus, it, the part that I didn't tell you, uh, also part of the project is to put a fence in front of that cooling tower. And the fence, the plans would be to let it match the fence that's going around the transformers on the north side of the courthouse so that both of those look the same. And the fence, we would ask that the, uh, the bid specs, the bid would be up to where the arch starts to curve, but then alternate to bring it all the way to the top of the arch. That's more money, we've been told that because it has to be made special to make the curve of the arch. So we could do that in a, in a base bid and alternate bids, if we have a choice.
What would be the height of the base bid?
It's about eight foot, eight and a half feet. There'd be two gates on it, one for the, the right side goes into the boiler room, the left side goes into where the prisoners are taken in, and those would be, uh, card controlled as well.
But still be open to the weather at the top, pardon me? Still be open to the weather from the top?
Yes, yes.
Just a suggestion, too, you can paint that black, the, all the, the plenums or whatever that is that's showing on the outside. Can you paint that, it, just make it disappear there?
Absolutely, absolutely. We still need at least that eight-foot fence to keep intruders from going behind them.
What would that fence be made out of?
Metal, it's a louvered fence.
Was there any discussion about the, doing the security at the entrance, widening the, the concrete that additional three feet, but not making it a circle drive, stopping the drive?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, that'll be, the circle drive would be an alternate. The, where you see on that drawing, the, the less speckled part of it, that would be the base bid, and then the drive-through part would be an alternate.
Did you think the base bid was two and a quarter?
No, that includes the drive-through.
Okay.
And, yeah, includes the drive-through.
So is that a retaining wall over there towards the coroner's driveway? Because that's a really big...
Yep, and there'll be a small retaining wall on the west side of the driveway because...
What kind of a timeline you're looking for on this?
You, you mean as far as?
What's your timeline of?
If you, if you approve the funding tonight, um, we'll be able to go ahead and mark, put this out for bid.
And you'll be ready for bid in about a couple of months or what?
Yeah, usually takes about sixty days by the time you get all the bid specs put together and advertising, yeah. So the actual project wouldn't be until twenty-six.
Yeah. Any some questions for Steve or the commissioners on this?
Well, I think we have to do what we have to do for the safety and the prisoner and that's all. I would move that way. Are you just looking for the funding for the twenty-three thousand to do that?
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, I would move that way. Approve that for, to get the whole project going.
I would second that, that has been an issue for many years, trying to get that taken care of.
They've moved and seconded that we approved the request for twenty-three thousand dollars for the engineering, operation, bids, specs, and so forth. Any additional questions or discussion? This, this would come from the?
Mr. Callman?
Just a question, I guess. This, this money would come from the one-time line item.
I know, I know it's not six million, but, you know, it's a start.
Steve.
You could spend six million. You could spend six million real easy then.
Just out of curiosity, the door, the entrance that is to the, uh, that's never really used, the entrance door?
Where the old welfare?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sure it would be more money, but anybody give any thought about making a Sallyport?
You know, it's, actually, the, the Sallyport, uh, concept is actually what is recommended. But as we discussed this, and to, to, to make it look compatible with the courthouse limestone, I mean, you're, you're probably talking a significant amount of money. And then that, that door where the welfare department, if you remember, it goes up steps, and it goes through a real low area.
Right, I know.
I mean, it's a real narrow an area.
So steep.
Yeah, it steps up and then steps down. And then plus, the ceiling is real low and it's real narrow. It's really not a good space to, for a, a jail deputy to lead a prisoner through. So that's why we go in through the other side.
Other questions? The motion has been seconded, all of us in favor of approving the engineering fee for this project. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
I think, uh, council is to be remended on the work you've done on the project. I know there's, uh, several ways to schedule this cap, or you have concerns as well, but I think you will, uh, you will make sure that those dollars are spent wisely, the ones that are spent. Most of them should not need to be spent. So thank you for your work on that. I will have a more full recording for your next meeting. For now, I'd be happy to answer any questions that we might have.
What is, I want to say thanks to commissioners for participating in the budget process. A lot of counties that they don't have this environment where it's a team effort. And the fact, team of ten, I've heard that somewhere before. And the fact that you stepped up and took the additional position that we agreed to previously in your reorganization, before you considered that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jeff? Okay, uh, typically each year when we get the budget approved, we, uh, then release the Irwin report that if anybody needs a copy of that, they can get that. And that's available now, of course, we've all had it, but we have not had that public, and that will be available if anybody wishes to look at that. Anything, any other business to come before us this evening? Mike, you got any business? We have a motion for adjournment. In favor, aye?
Aye.
You have adjournment.